That's longer than I expected.
Okay.
Get down. Are we?
Yep, yep.
It's just the. Yourself.
All right, you should be good.
All right, well, then we're gonna get, all right, we're gonna get started. Um, yeah, it's now streaming. All right, let's call the Northampton County Council meeting of December 3rd, 2020 to order. Let's see, I don't know about doing the pledge. If somebody, does somebody want to do the pledge?
Sure.
I don't know what you think a flag is, and go ahead, Kerry, why don't you do the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
Republic.
With liberty and justice for all.
Hey, hopefully we don't get tried for treason after that. Okay, Ms. Zumbo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzic.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the minutes of November 19th.
Make a motion.
Lyndy, do you have that?
I got Kerry and Tara.
Right, that's your motion and second. Voice acclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, none, good. Now, I got a new computer, and that's part of why I'm here. I'm, I'm learning the ins and outs of my new one, so if I, if I, you don't hear me when I do this or this, let me know, because they told me my old one was falling apart, so that might have been part of the problem. Anyway, we're gonna go to confirmation of appointments, reappointments. Mr. McGee, would you introduce the resolution?
Absolutely. Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment, reappointments as indicated thereafter. Airport Authority Board, James Irwin, term to expire December 31st, 2025. Northampton County Conservation District Board, Tara Zarinski, term to expire December 31st, 2021.
That's it?
There's one more.
Mental, Mental Health Early Intervention and Development Programs Advisory Board, Gene Morgano, term to expire January 23rd, 2024. So moved.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, then let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, now we're gonna have courtesy of the floor, so we're gonna have to be a little patient here. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address council under courtesy of the floor?
And you can either raise your hand on Zoom, or if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine. So if you want to speak now, please raise your hand, or hit star nine.
Now, I understand somebody from Habitat for Humanity was on, and this would probably be the time to, to, to do you, to speak to what it is that you were.
Well, we actually do have a hand raise, Matthew Muncie.
All right, well then, let's go to Matthew Muncie, and then is Jessica, are you here for Habitat?
Yes.
All right, well, we're gonna do Matthew Muncie, and then I'll do you, and then whoever might else want to go. Mr. Muncie, go ahead, five minutes. There he is. You're on, Matt.
Hello. I'm Matt Muncie. I think many of you may recognize me from about a year ago, representing the Northampton County Democratic Committee. Back then, I was concerned about issues surrounding the 2019 election. As you, you probably have noticed, a few things have changed since then. But I'm glad to be joining you here tonight. I, what I really want to say is thank you, especially to the Election Division, for running about as smooth an election as possibly could be done under the circumstances in 2020. We had mail-in voting, as we know, for the first time. I think upwards of 70,000 ballots went out from Northampton County. And, or seven, I think maybe there were 80,000 ballots sent out, and at least 70,000 that came back and were processed. And, and really, the, the team did a great job. The staff stayed on top of it. I know that there were people calling all the time to make sure that they got their ballots, or that they fixed any problem. We had a number of provisional ballots that were a result of, of the new mail-in ballot, that if you, if you had a mail-in ballot, then you couldn't vote on the machine to make sure you didn't vote twice. And so there were over 2,700 provisional ballots. The, the Republican Committee challenged somewhere between 400 and 500 of those, and it was an all-day hearing. But the, the, the team did a great job of staying on top of it and trying to help make sure that voters got the information they needed before the election, during the election, after the election, which was fantastic. So I, I just want to applaud the, the Election Division for their great work, and I, I know that there, there will be some issues to be aware of going forward. Certainly provisional ballots, like I said, are, are gonna be a bigger thing because of mail-in ballots. And I think the, the team already knows and is preparing for that, because we don't want any voter to be disenfranchised because of a mistake that an election official made when they were filling out their, their provisional ballot form. Few other things, certainly there were a lot of people that had, had difficulty getting their ballots. I think some of that may have been dismantling some of the machinery at the, at the post office and some backups with mail delivery. And I, I think, you know, that, that was unfortunate, when many people were relying on being able to get their ballots in the mail. Perhaps there, there might be a way to, to set up some tracking with the Postal Service, where each, each ballot has a tracking code so that they can make sure it gets to its destination, and send one out rapidly if it seems to be lost somewhere, or help the Postal Service identify where it might be lost. But regardless of that, I know we have a good team. Just, I just ask that you please make sure you provide the resources for 2021 and beyond, when we may not have CARES Act funds that really help make sure that happened in, in 2020. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Muncie, and we all agree that our, we've, we've been praising our election people. They, the state put a lot on us in a very short a period of time, in a very important election, and in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, so taking all that into account, I, they, they did phenomenal, and I think there's a lot we still have to look into going forward. Thank you for your comment. All right, next, I'm going to recognize Jessica Elliott, and she could be unmuted. There she is. You're good. Jessica, you were here for Habitat for Humanity, do you want to make your comment?
Sure, so I received a call from John last week, just inquiring about whether or not Habitat had a project within Northampton County. And I sent some information out, and then I received a phone call, just asking me to be present this evening, because I believe some people had some questions about our project, so I just wanted to be available to answer any questions that anybody might have.
All right. All right, any questions for Ms. Elliott? I, I got, received your information you sent. Do you, do you want to, because of what we're doing and how it's being handled, and this is new with us doing it completely virtual, could you just summarize briefly what it is you sent us that your plans are for next year? That might be.
Sure, we have a, a blank, raw piece of land in South Bethlehem that is set for a twin home right now. We do have some funding for the project to start. We're actually at a phase where we'll be applying for our permits to get the foundations in ground, so it is something that we're actively working on. But it, it will be, each home will be about 1,300 square feet, three-bedroom, one and a half bathroom, and will serve two families in Northampton County. The timeframe is a, a family would move in probably within a year.
Okay, well, now, we are going to be, this will come up during budget amendments, but since the way we're set up tonight, I guess I, I'm gonna open this up now to, since this is an agenda item, are there any questions that anyone has now for Ms. Elliott, because it's gonna be a while before she comes up? I see Kerry Myers, so we'll recognize Kerry Myers. Jessica, are you telling me that you're planning on doing this, this summer? Is that your plan for that? Because you're talking about permits?
Yes, the goal is to, if we have a mild winter, the foundation will go in over the winter time, but if not, as soon as winter breaks in early spring.
Where at in South Bethlehem? Are you, are you putting these twin homes?
They're on Williams Street in South Bethlehem.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all my questions. All right, um, I'm gonna ask a question and open it up, and then it's if anybody else has any questions. I had a, I just got your sheet, and I was scanning it, and I got to the bottom, and it said something about not having communication with our DCED since April of 2019.
Yep.
What, what's, what's that about? I mean, is there a, a communication problem between the county and, and your group, or?
Oh, no, not at all. We have a great relationship, and, and I, I think what that is referring to is that we haven't actually applied to the county for grants since then, and the reason, sorry, what was that?
I just wanted to understand it, because I was concerned if there were any issues.
Nope.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Ms. Elliott? Oh, Kevin, Mr. Lot.
Hi Jess, thank you very much for what you do. It's a great, a great organization you, you work for.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for the community. And, and I heard you refer to the grants, and you are aware of the fact that we, we have these grants, and they apply for the grants, and, you know, we really appreciate if, if you, you know, in the future, we're gonna look at an amendment tonight, but in the future, to be fair to our, our other organizations, we really should stick to the application with the grant. Now, we're gonna talk a little bit about a couple of things tonight, I believe, but I just wanted to put that out there, Jess, you're a great organization, we have grant money, we love you to follow the process in the future. Tonight, we're gonna talk about, you know, maybe an amendment with, with it to get some money to you, but like I said, it's, it, there's a, to be fair to all organizations, we'd appreciate, you know, in the future, because I, I wouldn't know why you wouldn't apply, because it is a great organization, so thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, if I can just respond to that, just because, you know, we do follow the grant process. We actually did not submit a grant, because in the first page of the CDBG application, it does specifically say that the city of Bethlehem receives their own CDBG funding. And so the county is really looking to serve programs that are servicing the townships and the boroughs that are outside of the city of Bethlehem. So I was, I was surprised when I received the, the call asking if we had a project in Northampton, because I was under the impression that we were not able to receive funding from the county based on that statement.
Thank you. Information I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. I mean, that kind of explains a lot to me, why you wouldn't apply if, if Bethlehem covers their own, but, you know, we're still gonna take a look at this amendment today. So you would apply if it wasn't in Bethlehem, is what you're telling me?
Correct. Yep. Or, or if that specific statement hadn't been there, you know, to, to be fair, as a nonprofit, looking at that, we also don't want to waste anyone's time who then is reviewing an application, and on the very first page, it basically says not to apply if you're not servicing the borough or the township.
Thank you. Ms. Sarinski, well, I wanted to be recognized.
I, I just wanted to see if, is Tina here to respond to that?
I believe she is. Tina?
Yeah, just, just to clarify the difference, Jess is correct, we do not fund CDBG products in the city of Bethlehem, because they do have their own entitlement. However, this project would be with the Affordable Housing Fund, so it's a different pot of money.
Oh, okay.
So if this is with the Affordable Housing Funds, is this an appropriate designation for this kind, type of housing for the county to, to sponsor? I mean?
The, the project itself would be yes, however, if you had some time to review the information that I sent out earlier today through Ms. Zumbo, we do that as a competitive process, and to just select one nonprofit for funding now, when we don't have an allotment enough in our coffers to create a competitive round, we just feel that that would not be fair to the rest of the nonprofits in the county.
That's what I'm concerned about here, is that we circumvented the process by allowing, but by not having a, a, a process by which people could apply and have this money given to them. It, it seems like maybe there should have been an application instead of just a designation of these funds to one specific group who didn't necessarily apply for it. Am I, am I on the right path with this? Because if, it feels like there are other groups that could have, would have benefited from this money as well, and could have if they were given the opportunity, and that opportunity was circumvented.
Tina, do you want to just briefly?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think Ms. Sarinski is absolutely on point. You know, we love to work with Jess. You know, if we had a substantial amount where we could open up a competitive round for this year, you know, into 2021, we'd love to, to do that, but we just don't have that money available right now. And again, it's, it's a competitive process. We have to look at the applications. I don't know, you know, we don't know anything about the project. What's the timeline? Is there a budget sheet? You know, we don't have any significant information to make a fair determination.
So Tina, let me just jump in. So if, if in fact, this doesn't get money, doesn't get moved tonight, in 2021, Habitat came to you, there's still a possibility they could get funds in 2021?
No, no, only because if you look at the sheet that we sent around, the, the most amount of money that we're going to have is already allocated, $150,000 that we've been doing through our First Time Home Buyer Program, which will assist 30 families at $5,000 per family to get into a home, and then the, the carryover balance that we'll have is already designated to previous grants that's just carried over, that's already committed. So if there was any additional money, we want to refrain and save that for COVID-19-related risks, like I mentioned the other night with the mortgages. We can keep four families in their homes at approximately $5,000 per piece. If we save, reserve some of this money for a COVID emergency, and like I said, $5,000 will keep, keep four families in their homes.
Right. All right, anybody else have any, Tara, hold on. Anybody else have any questions besides Tara? All right, Tara, go ahead.
Yeah, it's not as much a, a question as much as a comment. My concern is, is that Habitat for Humanity did not ask for this money. They may have found a need for it now that they have been queried, but this money might be better spent with COVID-related needs that are going to, I mean, arise within the next few months. We don't really know what's going to happen, and so I'm concerned that we're gonna allocate this money today for a project that we're not really, we don't have all the information for that they didn't actually apply for, and we won't have it when we actually need it for somebody who has a obvious need for the funds.
All right, and we will have a discussion then, when it, when the actual amendment comes up, if it does. Mr. Kuzic?
Yeah, just real quickly, I, I want to thank Jessica for coming. I, I think this is worthy. I think it's unfortunate that, that there was a misunderstanding between what is a CDBG and what is an Affordable Housing Grant. I think had, had she been aware of that, had this been explained, this may have been avoidable. Now, one of the potential options that, that County Council has is we, we, we do have funds available in our contingency that have gone unspent for this year, so that may be an option. But I believe that this is a, a worthy project. I think, you know, sometimes we have applicants that, that, you know, misunderstand grants, don't get everything straight, and, and we help them out. And if it's something that we deem worthy, we, we fund it, we help them, and this project, it's, there is a, a time, timeliness factor here. They are ready to go next year. And I, I think that this is worth funding, if not through this pro, through this line item, certainly through one somewhere in the budget. Thank you.
All right, and if there's no other questions for Jessica, Jessica, you're free to stay involved. You, you can watch, I'm, I'm mute you, but you can stay on, or watch us on YouTube, or just, you know, you don't have to stay, because it comes up, it's up to you. That's your option. But thank you for, for coming and addressing council.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Hello? Anyone else under courtesy of the floor? All right. Seeing no one, we're going to then go to the county the county executive report. Mr. Executive, you want to give a report?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. Tonight ends a very long process that begins when the budget books go out to the agency heads on June 1st. We present our proposed budget to you on October 2nd, and here we are in December, finally getting ready to pass another budget with a, a, without a tax increase. You are prepared, you're on the cusp of passing another budget without a real estate property tax. You are doing an excellent job for your citizens in that regard. You're on the cusp of passing a budget that is 11% smaller than the budget you passed last year, which was 6% smaller than the budget you passed before. This is a, a fiscal record that you should be very proud of, council, that you're, you're decreasing your budgets, you're not raising taxes, and you're fully funding farmland, environmentally sensitive land, and open space priorities such as county and municipal parks. That's a great achievement. You're fully funding Gracemont and all of its requested needs in the middle of a global pandemic without any contribution in this next budget. That is a, a great testament to the hard work you've been doing over this almost 20 hours of budget hearings since you were first presented with the budget in October 2nd. We have a very long and very transparent budget process in Northampton County, and, and, you know, historically, we tend to chew on the details right until the very last minute, but I expect you all to bask in the glow of the good work you've done throughout this budgetary process, and to share all of you collectively in that good work, I respectfully request that you unanimously approve this budget tonight, and very quickly, and because you have a long agenda, I will now sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. I didn't know we were being timed on our, how long we debated this budget, and I want everybody to take a moment to bask, as the executive suggested. All right, now, we're gonna go to all business.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Before you begin, I have a question about a point of order or a placement of a request.
Certainly.
If we have requests that we'd like to take from our contingency fund and add to the budget, is that done after this is passed, or prior?
After what is passed?
After we pass the budget and all the amendments, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're, you're asking about taking something from this year's contingency and applying it towards something?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it could be under new business.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, Mr. Spidoni, I mean, that's a procedural matter, but yeah, new business. Right, Chris? You have no objection? I can't hear you. I'm sorry, you're muted. Yes.
Would be correct.
All right, thank you. So yes, under new business, we can do it, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. All right, uh-oh, I see the head of a baron. All right, all right, disappeared. Okay, so we're gonna go to all business, and we're gonna go to consideration of matters related to the 2021 Northampton County Budget and Capital Improvements Plan. Consideration of budgetary position-related issues. First, it's created or eliminated positions. Number one on my list is the District Attorney's Office, the county detective. Mr. McGee, I hope you have your sheets in front of you, because you would be.
I certainly do.
Okay, well, this, though, it's to you. You introduce the resolution.
Thank you. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of county detective, pay grade DE 25, 1A, salary of $57,516 shall be created in the District Attorney's Office effective January 1st, 2021. This was discussed numerous times, and I am fully supportive, so moved.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the District Attorney's Office Public Relations Administrator. Mr. McGee?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Public Relations Administrator, pay grade CS 21, 1A, salary of $46,097 shall be created in the District Attorney's Office effective January 1st, 2021. Been discussed, so moved.
Thank you. Discussion?
You're welcome.
Discussion? Questions? All right, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the Court Services, and by the way, I'm just gonna take a break here. I see that DA Hauck is here, and I assume he's here probably to discuss later when we get to the budget amendments, and so I'm not ignoring the fact you're here. I figured that's what you were here for. Okay, very good. All right, next, we'll go to Court Service Administration Clerical Technician 3. Mr. McGee?
Thank you. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of Clerical Technician 3, pay grade CR 15, 1A, salary of $29,825 shall be created in Department of Court Services Administration effective January 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Discussion?
So moved.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot? Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Court Services Criminal Division, a clerical technician 3. Mr. McGee?
Thank you. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician 3, pay grade CR 15, 1A, salary of $29,825 shall be eliminated in the Department of Court Services Criminal Division, effective January 1st, 2021.
Very good, thank you. Discussion?
So moved.
Yeah. Discussion, seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, next, we have Court Services Archives Division, a clerical technician 3. Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician 3, pay grade CR 15, 1A, salary of $29,825 shall be created in Department of Court Services Archives Division, effective January 1st, 2021, so moved.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have Department of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Parks Maintenance Summer Staff. Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one part-time position of Parks Maintenance Summer Staff shall be created, I'm sorry, pay grade of CS 6, 1A, salary of $11,554 shall be created in the Department of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, effective January 1st, 2021, so moved.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Myers?
I have a question. How long is this position for the summer? How long is this supposed to be?
Here he comes. You're muted.
The position's typically between May and August.
Mr. Myers?
Okay. I was just looking at the memory thing.
Okay, any other question? I'm sorry, what? Any other questions while he's there? If there are none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging, a van driver. Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of van driver, pay grade PS 26, 1A, salary of $27,766 shall be eliminated in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Division, effective January 1st, 2021, so moved.
All right. Discussion? Mr. Myers?
I have a question on this. We're eliminating the position of a van driver. What are we putting in its place? And why are we eliminating a position that may benefit our elderly?
All right. I think we have Ms. Wondolowski. The way the camera is, I see a head, but I know it's not Steve Barron's. Okay, I see you.
No discrimination here.
Maybe we have to move the camera now so we can see who we're talking to.
That's enough.
Ms. Wondolowski, you're up.
I think we talked about it at the budget hearing. We have not had somebody in the van driver position in about two years because we simply don't have a need for that position within aging. So we did keep it bacon for a while to make sure that that trend would continue. And the next resolution is for the addition of a clerical position to deal with all of the paperwork that comes with protective services. So in order to keep budget friendly, we swapped, basically swapped the van driver for the new clerical position.
Okay, that's fine, but here's my question. There was a use for a van driver. How are we getting our elderly around if they need assistance? Are we subsidizing them some help?
Sure, most of our seniors are eligible for Lanta services if they are not driving on their own and things like that.
So Lanta's going to pick up the tab on that?
Oh, no, we help subsidize it. I'm just saying that they're eligible for that.
That's what I was asking. We do subsidize it. How much do we subsidize it? Do you have any idea?
No, I have no idea.
When you turn, you have the problem I had yesterday. You fade out as you do this, so I just want you to know.
Oh, all right, so I'll use my coach voice so everybody can hear me.
Then that would probably be good, and maybe Baron will throw a flag, who knows?
Yeah, I hope he tries. So basically, what we're saying is we are subsidized. Can you give us some figures on how much we're subsidizing that for me at some point?
Sure, it might even already be in the budget book, but I'll find that out for you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, that's all I ask.
I have a question, Sue. If in the future it's determined that we may still need a van driver, even if part-time, would that be something that you'd consider?
Oh, we'd consider anything if the need existed, but we're trying to use alternate arrangements whenever possible. Even when we had the van driver, that person was kind enough to do some clerical work for us because it really sort of was not a full-time job by the end.
All right, yeah. I mean, if it ever becomes part-time again, who knows? Maybe I'll apply one day.
You get an aging preference, sir, so... It's a young aging preference. It's a young aging preference.
It's fine, relax. I have a mirror, I don't take offense. All right, any more questions regarding the van driver? If not, we're going to call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, then next, we lead into the Department of Human Services Area on Aging Clerk Typist 2. Bill, Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerk typist 2, pay grade PS 27, 1A, salary of $29,157 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Division, effective January 1st, 2021, so moved.
Thank you. Discussion? None?
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Myers.
Just a question for Mrs. Wondolowski.
Are you back at the mic? Yes, she is.
Do we provide a service for our aging people that if they need help inside? And if we are, how much are we budgeting for that?
Need help with what, I'm sorry?
Any help they may need on the inside, like assistance at their home or something. Are we supplying any kind of service like that for our elderly?
There's, I don't know what the exact number is on that, but if we have folks who are in need of protective services, so those folks who are at highest risk, if there's a small project that can be done to ensure that the elderly person would be kept safe in their home, we do those on occasion. It's not a large number of projects. That's not, we don't have a large home improvement budget.
I think he might be also referring to if somebody just needs some help so they don't have to leave their home.
That was my follow-up question.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know we had people that would come in in the past now and then, and I forget the term for it. You would know it.
Homeade?
Like a homeade. It's not, has anything to do with the clerk typist? I think it's because you're here, Mr. Myers wants to know if we have anything like that yet.
Yes, of course we do. It's our options program, and that provides all of the in-home services that someone would need in order to remain in their home and avoid placement in a nursing home.
Okay, is there a number of how many people are helping with that?
Of course.
Could you get that back to me whenever you get a chance? I'm a little curious as to how many were helping out in the county.
Sure.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Actually, because I'm doing some driving, so I'm getting a lot of information.
Ah, okay, good. I'm sure Ms. Wondolowski would appreciate it. So anything else? If not, we're going to call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers? Carrie?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, Department of Human Services Mental Health Accountant 2. Mr. McGee?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of accountant 2, pay grade PS 38, 1A, salary of $47,532 shall be created in the Department of Human Services Mental Health Division, effective January 1st, 2021, and is so moved.
Thank you. Question? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
And that was the, was that the accountant 2 or was that the election?
Accountant 2.
All right, yeah, here we are. All right, next, Department of Administration Conduct of Elections Elections Technician. Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of elections technician, pay grade RU 16, 1A, salary of $32,089 shall be created in the Department of Administration Conduct of Elections, effective January 1st, 2021, so moved.
All right, thank you. Questions? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our creating new or eliminating existing positions. And next, we're going to go to upgraded full-time positions. And first on the list, we have Department of Fiscal Affairs Budget Administrator. Mr. McGee, once again, would you introduce this resolution?
It is hereby resolved that one full-time position of budget administrator, pay grade CS 37, 1A, salary of $96,288 shall be upgraded to the pay grade CS 37, 2B, salary $100,621 in the Department of Fiscal Affairs, effective January 1st, 2021, so moved.
Thank you. All right, discussion. Mr. Kuzik?
Yeah, real quick, and I'm repeating myself from yesterday. Certainly, this person in this position is doing a fine job. And I just feel that having only been in the position for a year, I don't feel that a 7% raise is warranted at this time. Maybe in the future I would, but right now I'll be a no vote.
Very good. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
No.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. Next, Department of Fiscal Affairs Fiscal Administrator. Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved that one full-time position of fiscal administrator, pay grade CS 32, 1A, salary of $76,489 shall be upgraded to pay grade CS 32, 2B, salary of $79,931 in the Department of Fiscal Affairs, effective January 1st, 2021, so moved.
Thank you. Discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Department of Human Resources Leave Administrator, Mr. McGee?
It is hereby resolved that one full-time position of leave administrator, pay grade CS 20, 2B, salary $46,800 shall be upgraded to pay grade CS 22, 22, 2B, salary of $50,445 in the Department of Human Resources, effective January first, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Uh, discussion. Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, next we have Department of Community and Economic Development, Community and Economic Development Specialist, uh, Mr. McGee.
It is hereby resolved that one full-time position of Community and Economic Development Specialist, pay grade CS twenty-three, one A, salary of fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS twenty-three, two B, salary fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars in the Department of Community and Economic Development, effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, so moved.
Thank you, discussion. Um, don't see any, so, okay, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh, all right, next, then we move to, uh, Sheriff's Department. We have two clerical specialists, uh, Mr. McGee.
It is hereby resolved that two full-time positions of Clerical Technician Three, pay grade CR fifteen, two B, salary sixty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, shall be upgraded.
He's reading the wrong one.
Oh, hold it, hold it. Um, Linda, what did you say?
He's reading the wrong one, we're on the sheriffs, right? Yeah, it's the sheriffs.
It says sheriff, it does say sheriff, care.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm miss-
That's okay.
I misspoke.
No problem.
All right, go ahead.
I did something like that last night, I, I know how it happens.
Sheriff's Department, too, go ahead.
I will, I will pick back up where I left off.
Sure.
Uh, shall be upgraded to pay grade CR seventeen, one A, salary sixty-five thousand, four hundred and six dollars in the Sheriff's Department, effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, so moved.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Corrections Public Safety Administrator. Mr. McGee, would you please read this?
It is hereby resolved that one full-time position of Public Safety Administrator, pay grade CS thirty-one, three C, salary of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, shall be upgraded to pay grade CS thirty-one, four D, salary of eighty-three thousand, three, three hundred and sixty dollars in the Department of Corrections, effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, so moved.
Thank you, is there any discussion? And Mr. Kuzic.
Just, uh, again, briefly, uh, when we went over this during the budget hearings, I, I didn't get a clear sense as to the reason for this upgrade, so I will be voting no.
Okay, fair enough. Anybody else have anything they want to say? If not, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
No.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. Next, we go to the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging, Area Agency on Aging Administrator. Mr. McGee.
It is hereby resolved that one full-time position of Area Agency on Aging Administrator, pay grade HS forty-seven, one A, salary seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars, shall be upgraded to pay grade HS forty-seven, two B, salary seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars in the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging Division, effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, so moved.
Thank you. Um, all right, any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, okay, now, that concludes what we have, there, there's, uh, something I would wanted, wanted to introduce, but I'm going to wait until we get to the amendments to the budget, because it's not necessarily something that ha- it has to do with the budget, but it may not have to be voted on tonight. And I didn't want to spring it on anybody, but, but I'll explain myself at that time. All right, next, we're going to consideration of twenty twenty-one salary resolution. Ms. Vargo Hefner, you have that?
Um.
Linda can tell you which one it is if you don't.
Is it, uh, Career Service and Exempt Employees?
Mm-hmm.
Resolved by the North Ham- pardon, yes, resolved by the North Hampton County Council that the twenty twenty-one salaries of the Career Service and Exempt Employees, not within collective bargaining units, whose job classifications are within the parameters of the North Hampton County Career Service and Exempt Pay Scales, respectively, as well as the part-time professional employees, shall be as indicated on the attached pay scales.
Thank you, and that's, uh, what we, one of the things we do, we, we decide salaries. So, discussion. If there's no discussion on the scales as they are, we'll call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Zumbo, I believe now we have the adoption of the twenty twenty-one budget and capital improvements plan.
Yes.
Okay, uh, who, wait, I don't have my thing written here as far as introducing.
Um, there was no one listed, because I didn't know who was going to introduce them.
All right, is there someone who'd like to introduce the budget and capital improvements plan?
No, technically, that's just the title.
Right.
And then number one is the amendment.
One is individual, okay, I didn't know. Something was changed and we were doing something different, fine, all right, we're going to each individual one. Uh, thank you, that clarified it for me. Considerations of Amendments to the Proposed Twenty Twenty-One Budget. Uh, someone would, someone introduce that resolution.
I will.
All right.
By the North Hampton County Council that the proposed twenty twenty-one North Hampton County Budget shall be amended as indicated on the attached document.
Okay, now, this is the one for everybody, uh, is there a, um, we don't need it, all right, this is, uh, the one that has the attachment on it, and it has the various, uh, amendments. So, what we're going to do is discussion. Uh, the easiest thing may be for me to just go down and say the, the first heading you see is General Government, Administration. And, uh, are there any questions, uh, on the, uh, on, in, under administration, which is Executive Page Thirty-Six, Farmland Preservation, Route Thirty-Three TIF, the OSI Farmland and the Conduct of Elections? And you can see what it is and, and hopefully had a chance to review it. Um, are there any questions under General Government on where we're at with the budget? If not, let's move on to Court Systems and Corrections. There we have the, um, operating, uh, the District Attorney, uh, there is one where it was introduced, and I'm going to let Ms. Hefner speak to it if she wants, if there's any discussion. Uh, but that was put in and discussed, moving, um, reducing the amount of operating by fifty thousand. Are there any discussion or questions?
Well, I have a question first.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
It is procedural, we discussed it on Tuesday, that if I wanted to take that amount of money and put it into contingency, would now be the time to do so and to make that motion. Because rather than just eliminating the money, we discussed the idea of putting it aside, reviewing it, and then possibly giving it after the review.
All right, so if my understanding is correct, you would be proposing an amendment to the resolution of the proposed budget revisions, that if, in fact, all of these are passed, the fifty thousand dollars you're reducing would be put into County Council's contingency.
Yes.
I believe that would be the appropriate procedure, Mr. Spadoni? I'm sorry.
He's on mute.
Yeah, you're muted. You're muted. Go ahead, now you're not. Now you are, now you're not.
It is appropriate for members of council to make amendments at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be the proper procedure. Thank you. All right, Ms. Vargo Hefner, you have an amendment?
So I would like to make a motion that we increase the counts, that we take the fifty thousand dollars and add it to the County Contingency Fund at this time.
Okay, and that's the fifty thousand that we-
The fifty thousand from his budget to hold in escrow or abeyance or whatever, until we can have a further review, because, you know, rather than cutting it completely and having it go to the general fund, we'd hold it, we'd do our review as we discussed, and then we can immediately disperse it if we so choose.
All right, for, for simplicity and, and, uh-
I think I had a written motion somewhere, if you want me to-
Well, you, you mo- we can work it out, we, everyone knows what your motion is, you want to put fifty, the fifty thousand dollars you were, uh, in your original to take from his operating budget, you want to specify that it goes into North Hampton County Council's twenty twenty-one contingency account.
Yes.
All right, and we can get the wording to that effect. I will second it for the purposes of discussion. All right, discussion. Mr. Myers.
Yes, so you know, I won't be voting for this, because I, I don't think taking money from the DA is a smart thing to do.
Okay. Um, I, I will vote for it, because as you know, I'm, I, I oppose taking it out originally, but if it ends up being taken out, I want it to be in a place where it's easily accessible, and it is most easily accessible by council in its contingency account. We don't really have to go through a, a, any voodoo economics, um, with, with fiscal, so, uh, I'll, I'll support it, this, this amendment to the original motion. Uh, Ms. Tara Zirinsky.
So, if we put this money in the contingency and it's earmarked for this, and let's just say it, it happens that that money never gets to the DA for, for whatever reason, what happens to the money, does it just sit in the contingency fund?
It's like any money in the contingency fund, if it doesn't get used up for anything by the end of the year, uh, it will just go back into the general fund. And, and let me be clear about this, just so you understand.
So it doesn't just get absorbed into the contingency fund and stay there?
Well, yes, it does. I mean, she's, it's being specified, if there's a way we can do it to say this is specified, but what you're going to show is instead of a hundred and fifty thousand in your contingency, you're going to end up with a hundred and seventy thousand, or no, a hundred, two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, and, and, uh, what would happen then is that would be there, and if, if it's released, if this emergent amendment passes, because we still have to vote on the original, um, if it, if it's decided to give that money to the DA, and then, yes, it would come from contingency and be taken out. If in the future ye- this year, it's never voted on, or it's not taken out, it stays in your contingency until the end of the year, unless you want to transfer it to the administration, which I don't think you want to do. No, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, yes, your, your answer, the answer to your question is, it is in council's hands until we give it.
I, I guess the reason why I ask that is because there are other things that come out of contingency fund. We already talked about the Habitat for Humanity and, and that potentially coming out of the contingency fund. So, uh, I'm just, just clarifying.
This, this, yeah, this is, this is just in case, if, and I say if, I hear, I see you, Kevin, I'll get you. If, in fact, this amendment passes, then you're just saying, okay, what, this is amending her original amendment, basically. If that passes, which it hasn't yet, but if her budget, if her path, it passes that she's, we take fifty thousand, because that's the vote that counts, the one tonight. If a majority votes to take fifty thousand out of the DA's operating budget, it will pass with this amendment as attached to it, correct, Mr. Spadoni?
Yes, you would have to, okay, you would have to vote as amended, correct?
Yes, so what we want to know now is, do you want to amend the original motion, but we're not voting on the original motion.
Right, we're just voting on the fifty thousand dollars.
To be put into the contingency. And, and then when we vote on your original amendment, as amended, amended, that's what would happen to the fifty. Is, you read it that way, Chris?
I do, you're voting on the amendment at this point.
Got it.
All right.
I'm just, I was just concerned that the money could be used in the contingency for something else if it doesn't.
I would say no, I mean, that's up-
It is not my intention, that, that is not my intention in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to, I, I, if it ends up that way, I would like to see some kind of language that specifies why it's there, and-
I questioned that, and I was told I couldn't necessarily specify.
All right, all right, I think we know.
I did ask that, and I was going to put that in the language, because that's exactly what I'm doing. I discussed that with Mr. Houk, I, I wanted to make sure that I, we understood that that is what it was for. Not looking to usurp his budget and give it to us, it's-
All right.
It's held in, in a escrow.
Okay, very good, Mr. Lot.
Speaking on the amendment to the amendment.
Yes.
Speaking on right now, so, we're going to hold the money for a period of time until the DA does what, brings us information? I mean, what lets this money loose? Um, I personally would like to see this resolved today, one way or another, I don't know, you know, what we're actually going to hold over, you know, what are we looking for? What are we going to, how are we going to release this money? Um, I think that needs to be discussed, I, I, I can't vote to hold money if I don't know what we really need to release it.
Well, I mean, okay, you can discuss that now. Uh, I mean, if this fails, this amendment, the, her original motion is still something that would be coming up for discussion. So, I mean, if you want to have a discussion now, I, I, I don't know, because I, I wanted, I, I was willing to give him the money. So, I mean, I've got to decide, you, people have to, to explain what is specifically you want from the RIC. But right now, we're talking about the amendment to, to her emotion. Are you in, if, are you in favor of putting fifty, of specifying that if it passes, the fifty thousand would go to our, a contingency? I think that would be the question at hand.
Well, I don't know what cuts it loose.
We would-
May I clarify, since I'm making the motion, rather than going to discuss the other part of it, we had a discussion about this the other day, a motion passed. You know, it was made very clear that this isn't about cutting his funds at all. This was about not adding additional funds until we got further clarification about the RIC and its funding sources and what exactly we are funding. So we all stated the other day that we would have a review, that we would ask for a report for this very early in the year, and so, well, uh, just like tonight, before this meeting, we had a report on the jail, we got some clarification, done deal. All I'm asking for is a clarification, I wasn't asking Mr. Houk to put this forward right before us in December, put it on hold, and then review it January, as soon as January.
All, all, all right, hold on, I'm going to go back to Kevin to, just, just so we're all clear. Everything we talk about prior to a county council meeting is not settled law. We could have all kinds of nine, nothing votes, five, four votes.
I understand that, I just want to say I'd like to keep it to the pointed hand, because we're going to be having a further discussion.
The pointed hand is where fifty thousand dollars should go if, in fact, fifty thousand dollars is cut from his operating budget. Mr. Lot.
So, what we're looking for to release this money is, is more information about how the funded, I, I, and I'm asking, uh, we're looking for how it's funded, how it's actually used, how it benefits the county of North Hampton, how much we get back. You know, I, I, I want details on this, I want to know how many crimes were actually solved. And I, quite frankly, it'll sound terrible, the fifty thousand dollars is not my concern. I know there was an ask sometime back for about a half a million dollars, and that is my concern. Fifty thousand for fighting crime here is, 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 doesn't make or break me. If we go to half a million dollars, which was asked already of this council, and there was a resolution at that time, I believe, and the council said we would meet, I was not on council, so I'm going from what I understand, that anything the municipalities did, we would match. So we kind of put it on them, it thought they saw value, and they're the police force, they're the, you know, state police, local police, that's the police. If they saw the value, we wanted them, my understanding, council wanted them to have some skin in the game, because they're the ones that get the value out of this. If they can't go to their taxpayers, the same taxpayers, the same property tax we go to, and ask for their, them to get in the game, you know, so that is one of my concerns, if, because I understand that no municipalities, or very few of them, So that is one of my concerns, if, because I understand that no municipalities, or very few of them, took the offer up. I don't think we spent any money, so no municipalities thought it was worthwhile to go to their taxpayers and ask to raise the property tax, but yet that's the same people we have. Now, that being said, back to the fifty thousand dollars. I don't see the point of holding the fifty thousand dollars if what we're looking for is more uh, detail, if the DA Hall, Hall would tell us that we will have the director of the RIC in here in January or February with explaining funding. We want, we need to know what Lehigh County plans to do in the future, we need to know what the state, and I know that's kind of a mystery, but everybody sees where the financing is on the state. What's the state going to do, are they going to continue, a, and right now, you know, to say North Hampton County, well, I'll save all that for the, the big, the red. But I really feel that we need, I'd rather have this resolved tonight and have the district attorney tell us what he's going to do. And, and we, I, I think we can trust our district attorney with a loan, you know, with that fifty thousand dollars for him to come back. And if he doesn't, if, if, if they don't want to come explain a lot of the questions we have, which is our due diligence to our taxpayers. If they don't want to do that, then I would say, John Kusick brought up, uh, excuse me, Councilman Kusick brought up a very interesting idea about if you don't want to do that, Mr. Hall, take it out of eight, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars you have. I know you said it had to be for drugs, so I looked into that a little bit. I looked what that money was spent for in the past, by the past DA. You would look golden, in my layman opinion, I am not a lawyer. But what I saw that money spent on in the past, this would definitely qualify and look really good. So that's where I stand on holding the money back. I'd rather move it forward, but I need that commitment from the DA that we're going to have a real conversation about these funds. And where we're going to end up in a couple of years with this thing, because if it is a half a million dollars, that means we got to cut other programs, or we got to go to our taxpayers and ask for more money. And that's a serious thing, so we really need to take a good look at this. Because if we cut other programs, we hurt people there too, thank you.
All right, before we go any further, I recognize anyone. Aileen, I want you to mute everybody but myself and Mr. Spadoni. Okay?
I can't hear you, Ron.
Okay, all right, I. To, to, to move things along.
I can't hear you.
Okay, um, Aileen, am I unmuted? I can't hear Chris, please unmute.
You, you're unmuted.
And Chris?
And Chris, I keep asking him.
Chris, unmute. Unmute.
Got it.
All right, good, all right, here's the deal, and Chris and I will have this thing, and people can listen. First of all, we're not bound by anything any past council did. Or any thoughts they had, or concerns they had, or the five hundred thousand, I don't know about, I, I don't underst, I don't know. Whatever decisions were made by them, or whatever thoughts they had, tonight you have the opportunity for your thoughts, this is this council. So, um, whether he wants five hundred thousand somewhere down the road, or a million, I, I don't know, right now, tonight. What we're voting on, and, and there's two things. The first is really just an amendment to the amendment, which we haven't even touched on yet. And the amendment to the amendment is to put fifty thousand dollars in our contingency. And the reason I can see value for this, for Ms. Hefner, is if you just take fifty thousand out. Then you have to go hat in hand to fiscal somewhere next year and say, please give us fifty thousand dollars that we took out of his budget and put into the cash reserves. And I don't know how that'll go. This way, council, whatever you put in the contingency, you control, you don't have to ask anyone for it. You, with a majority vote, can release that money, not release that money. So, so that's the amendment we're talking about right now. The amendment right now isn't the big amendment, it is. If, and if in fact, the original amendment passes. The contingency to that is that fifty thousand, that fifty thousand she's cutting will be put into our contingency account. That's the amendment that's on the table right now. So if, if we're all clear on that, I think we should, I'll open it back up, but I think we should limit our discussion to that. And then when we get to the, whether it passes or not, we're still going to have to vote on Lori's original amendment. And then if you want to have a broader discussion, that's maybe the time to have it, because I know the DA is here as well. Mr. Spadoni, how do you read what I just said?
I think that's appropriate, the only concern I would have is that echoing Mr. Lot and Ms. Hefner. Council controls the contingency fund. The majority of council, that is a number that is at council's discretion by proper second motion of vote.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and that's my only concern here, you know, I, I already opposed this. But I, I believe that if in fact, Ms. Hefner, at taking the money out, she made clear in her original that you may want to give it back to, give it to him after some presentation. Well, that's going to be a lot more difficult to do if you don't set the money aside where you control it.
And let me be, and let me be clear, that it is not my place as the solicitor to council to advise as to the propriety or impropriety of any action. My job is to make sure that we do this in an appropriate fashion, that we carry the water legally. And I'm, I'm trying to do that with the amendment, I, I'm not expressing any opinion whatsoever on the amendment to the amendment or the amendment.
I know, I just, I was just, uh, getting your, you know, having you weigh in on if there was anything that was being done that somehow crossed some line, and it isn't. So I'm going to open it back up, but again, this is about if in fact fifty thousand is taken from him, where it should be paid, put, so let's go back again. Uh, Mr. Myers had his hand up. Uh, okay, Aileen, you can open it up again.
Everyone, uh, everyone who is a council member has the ability to unmute, unmute themselves, so they can go ahead and do that.
And Mr. Myers, you're recognized, unmute yourself, and let's, let's stick to this amendment. Amended, amended, amend, amendment, amend.
Am I, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, as, as long as we have complete control of this fifty thousand dollars, I, I'm fine with this.
All right, is there any discussion on this before we go to the big one? If not, I'm just going to call for the vote on the, on the amendment, on the amendment, that's all. Okay, let's, let's vote, all right, Ms. Zembo, call for the vote on the amendment.
Ms. Sparkle Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Bill, you're muted.
Bill hit star six. He's on the phone.
Billy, you're muted. There you are, what do you say, yes, no? Bill?
Miss, Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
All right, thank you, all right, now, that's been amended, so now let's go. That, now what you're doing is, we are now going to discuss the district attorney operating motion to withtake fifty, cut fifty thousand dollars from the existing budget from his operating budget. So let's have discussion, now it's, it's the whole deal, so whatever you want to get into, now would be the time. And I'm sorry if I pushed, but I wanted to get that off to the side, because this is really what you're talking about. This seems to be where the bone of contention is, so, okay. Uh, discussion, Mr. Myers.
Okay. It seems to me that the bone of contention seems to be here that we haven't got proper explanation from the people in charge of the RIC. And because there is no vessel to use it, the DA does not come before the council, except if he's called for. Since this falls on courts and corrections, maybe we should have a meeting with him and add him to courts and corrections. Subcommittee meeting and take it from there.
Well, yeah, and I agree, I, in fact, I mentioned that, I think, to Mr. Houk when I met with him earlier uh, 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 last month or something, I wanted to get a nice talk with him, and I realized that it would be good if we had more communication with the DA, maybe in a more formal manner, and I suggested he be added to, to our committees, and he seemed to be okay with that, and I, I, I think that's appropriate going forward, so I, I, I don't see a problem with that. Who, all right, anybody else who wants to be recognized on this? Kevin, did you have any more, any other question?
Well, you know, everything I said, I, I'm a little, you know, I, I've heard the word decrease the budget here, and, and I just want to clarify that, that we all know this. We, we increased the DA's budget over a hundred thousand dollars. You know, we did not, we, 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 we held the line, what we're talking about now right now is holding the line on one budget item, which happens to be the RIC. We did not decrease the RIC, we did not hamper its function in any way, the RIC is moving along, it's a very good program. It, it, you know, very good going after gangs, um. So, you know. I'm not against the program, I just really, really, and, and the other thing is, I, I, the other day I heard, you know, we got paperwork on, from the DA office about this paperwork. I didn't get anything until about three hours before the last meeting, that we had to discuss this from the DA, and I did not have time to review that information. So, you know, and, and I know some of this information hit our county, according to the emails last week, I'm kind of shocked that we didn't have this paperwork earlier, so I, I just wanted to put that out. I got a lot of questions, but I think they're more appropriate, hopefully we have a meeting moving forward, I think they're more appropriate that. I can easily support this, what I'm worried about, what I'm worried about is what's coming down the road. When this, you know, the grants cover this thing a lot, you know. So that's what my concerns were, that, you know, how do we fund this thing in three years if it turns into one hundred and ten, turns into half a million dollars? We, we need to look at these things and be honest with each other. You know, because if, if, if that's where it's going to end up, we better start planning for it now, and I know I was told that half a million asked was of, of the last council. So it's a real number that's been thrown out there at us, it's already been asked from us. So it's, it's, it's our job to make sure we look at the funding, we're not, I'm not, I support the DA, I think he's doing a great job. You know, he gets out to the community, he's been out in the community, meeting with the police, meeting with the community, I mean, I support the guy, I'm not, but we have a job. And our job is to, I, making sure that finances work for this county, making sure our taxpayers can stay in their homes. So anyway, I'll listen to everybody else, I'm pro the RIC, and I'm pro this DA, but I think we better be careful, the road we go down on funding these things. And then if we do fund it, we make sure that, you know, who's the director? I believe the director is the DA of Lehigh County, I could be wrong on that, but my understanding, that's the director of RIC. I really want to know how many cameras we have up in North Hampton. How many crimes have we, because we're going to have to cut something if this thing goes the road I think it's going to go. So I, I have to value what's going to be, not today, not tonight, but down the road, I'm, I, I want to learn more about the RIC, and I want to learn more about the funding, because down the road, we may have a very tough decision to make, we don't tonight, in my opinion, thank you.
All right, well, yeah, and as, as you pointed out, I mean, every council, at any time, it's our decision to make. If he should walk in next year wanting four hundred thousand dollars, I probably would vote no. But I mean, you know, well, we, we, we have the power to say yes or no regardless, you're right there, so. Uh, I think Mr. McGee has his hand up, and I want to recognize him, but his, he's, he's, you're, you're muted, Bill. Billy? Mr. McGee?
Hang on. He's been asking in the chat room to be unmuted, but I guess it's not working.
Hit star six, Bill. Oh, have you joined us by Zoom?
I don't see him, that's a problem.
I did.
He's the phone number.
Yeah, I know that, it's been the phone number, but if he joined us by Zoom, hello?
He's on Zoom now.
No, okay, he didn't let me know that.
I apologize, I, I got back on to the computer to download the one amendment, and I got off, so I got on with my phone, I'm back on the computer, I apologize for the.
No problem, Billy, what, you want to say something? All right, you're recognized.
That, that's all, I just needed to get unmuted.
Okay, thank, your, thanks. Now, is there any further discussion on, and I'm going to put, you know what, we have the schedule of budget revisions. Uh, I am going to suggest that we vote, because I think this is the only one that's probably going to be an issue, but I could be wrong. Uh, we're going to vote on this district attorney business as it stands.
Ron? I think DA Hawk has something to say.
I understand, I'm going to get to him, but I just wanted to, to say this, procedurally, what I'm doing, because we'll do that, now before, Mr. Houk.
Wait, 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 you're going to vote on it as it stands, as we just amend, we just amended it?
Yes, yes, I'm taking, it's on your, the schedule of budget revisions, but based on the discussion, when I have, we have the vote finally, we're going to vote on this specifically, and then the rest of them that are on the budget revisions.
All right.
Okay? Because somebody will pull it out anyway, so. So that's where we're at, now before I get to you, Mr. Houk, Mr. Kusick, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, just, just briefly, and I had mentioned this in the past. As Mr. Lot had, Councilman Lot had mentioned previously, there, there's eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars currently listed in the drug forfeiture funds. You know, in the past, we've seen that those funds used for, for shiny glossy mailers that have come out of the DA's office. Um, and, and that's nice and all, and that's nice information. Uh, but I think that a program like this would certainly be a worthy uh, use of those funds, and I, I would like to see some buy-in from the district attorney's office from those funds. Uh, at, at least in the short term, certainly not all of it, but I think that a, a commitment uh, to use those funds for this specific platform would, would be worth consideration, thank you.
All right, is, is there anyone else before, and, and that doesn't mean you're not going to be able to talk, but I, I want to go to, to Mr. Houk, but I just wondered, does anybody want to say anything before I do? Uh, go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Are, are we planning to have a meeting with them be, at all? Is that going to be part of this arrangement?
Not part of this budget being passed, no.
Okay.
Uh, now, I'm going, because Mr. The DA, Mr. Houk, he's an independently elected official, like we are, like the executive, like the judges, so I'm going to bring him into this discussion, and I'm, I'm, as I run the meeting, I'm going to give him the same leeway I give any elected official, be it Mr. McClure, President Judge Curry, or as I gave, or who was given the job Morganelli, so, Mr. Houk, uh, you, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, I, uh.
Are you unmuted?
I, I'm, yeah, I'm ready to jump out of my seat here, because I hear more and more, especially with the last comment, because I hear more and more about the past, about the past, and about the future, what's going to happen there. First off, I don't know what you're talking about with glassy mailers, i- i- if, if you see me send one glassy mailer out of the drug forfeiture fund, and I'd like to see it, because I've never sent one. This is a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars I'm asking specifically for the RIC. At, the amendment that was proposed wants to cut that, and you can word it any way you want it, but you want to cut it, no matter where you want to put it. This is an amount of money that I feel is, is important to keep the county safe. And I, and I believe it's a small price to pay, as we discussed the other night. Um, to, to look for alternatives would cost us a ton more money, this is a very cheap investment. Now, I don't know anything about the five hundred thousand dollars in the past, nor do I care about anything in the future, because it's not my intention to ever ask for any more money right now as I sit here, because I don't need anymore. The price to get into this is a hundred thousand dollars, I honestly, folks, don't know what I could show you later that would help this, I, I, I just get this feeling, it's, we're trying to, you know, make up for something, so that we can delay this. The one I, and with respect to what Mr. Lot said, Mr. Lot, I think you had a great idea with, with me bringing Julia Coaksus in, she's the director, it's not the DA, she is the director of the RIC. And as far as, again, and I thought I explained this the other night, the local municipalities, it all connects, and it all funnels to us, whether they get involved or not, it is irrelevant. Because, because some of them don't have the money, some of them, I, I don't, I don't even want to think for them. But the bottom line is, it's, it's a pyramid that comes up to us, and, and ends with us with our prosecutions. So we need it, it's critical, because to have that information, whether the local municipalities are involved or not, is critical for our county detectives, for, for our prosecutions, and for the other departments that are involved. If you want, now, I know that, that representatives from the RIC were here in the past, and I could bring this woman here in a second, she would be more than happy to, to answer the questions that I apparently am not answering for you. But I would ask that you pass this in its entirety now, and I will bring her in, I'm sure she'll come in whenever you want, she is, she wants to see the same thing I do, which is to keep the people of the Lehigh Valley safe. And, and that's, that's really what this is all about, and I just, it, it just gets me very discouraged when we talk about what happens in the past, or the drug forfeiture fund, which I couldn't disagree with you two gentlemen more on. Um, what happened in the past was in the past, okay? And I will decide what it, what the drug forfeiture fund will be, will be spent on, but I will do so with the understanding that it has to be drug related. And right now, what my office uses the RIC for priority, primarily for is, is, is high level murders and things of that nature, which are not exclusively drug related. So I'm not prepared at this time to spend drug forfeiture, not because I'm trying to hoard it, but because, because I just don't think it's appropriate. And that's the only reason, I, I, I have no reservations about this drug forfeiture fund, I will use this money to help, again, to help keep the, the people safe in the best way and the most legal way that I can. And I just, I just don't know how else to, to answer this, but I, I, if, if what you want is yet more information, then I think we can, we can go with Mr. La. then I think we can, we can go with Mr. Lot and say, okay, we'll, we'll bring her in. Let's give them the money and we'll bring her in. Because if you don't give me money, you are cutting it. And if you, and if you're saying that you're not cutting it, then what you're saying is you're going to give me the money anyway. And if you are, then let's do that and I'll bring her in.
All right, uh, that's, for now, is that it, Mr. How?
Yes, unless anybody else has any questions?
No, I, I want to just, I'll, I'll recognize, uh, you, Lori. I just want to say, play devil's advocate and ask Mr. How the question. I mean, I guess one of the questions I have, and I'm only the devil's advocate, not the devil, some people. I know there's been a lot of talk that's gone around and I've heard scuttlebutt too about the Rick this, the Rick that. I, I, I never really understood much about what the Rick does. I'm no law enforcement expert. I don't pretend to be. Uh, when I had a conversation with you, Mr. How, uh, it was very illuminating. And, and I guess what I, my, the point of my question is this, based on what you told me, so much of what the Rick does is, is intelligence-based and, 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 uh, privileged info-based. Uh, maybe I can make it clear this way. I was curious once because some employees were concerned about going out into a dark parking deck after meetings. So I asked the sheriff at a public meeting, do we have security? Like, there are no sheriffs out there or do you have cameras? And he said, don't, you shouldn't worry about it. We have it covered, but I don't want to, I, I'm not going to disclose publicly how it's being covered. And I sat back for a second, but then I thought, okay, I get it. I see where he's coming from. I have to accept what he's saying because he's the sheriff. And, and if he says it's safe as best he can, so be it. So I guess my question then, knowing that with the Rick, is how much information would they be able to share with us? Because of the fact of what they do, like an intelligence gathering agency?
It's an excellent question and they'll, they can, they're, they won't be able to share investigations, so to speak, but they'll, they'll be able to share what they do to get to these investigations. What, what, who gives them information and things of that nature? I, I, I don't think they, they could, they were in a position to tell you where they place their, uh, traffic cams or, um, you know, what's an update on the, on the recent, uh, gang activity in this area or that area. But I think they could tell you how they get to where they're going, how many employees they have working toward it, uh, the technology involved, how they help things in, in, uh, the district attorneys in both counties, uh, for preparation and, uh, and, and demonstrating in court and things of that nature. So they could do that.
No, I mean, that would, that, I appreciate that. I think it would help council overall and it would help clarify this, this Rick. Because I think a lot of what I've heard is here, there, and I, like I said, I sat with you and frankly, I misunderstood some of what they did. So, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Lori Vargo Hefner had her hand up and then I'll go to Carrie Myers.
I'm not even sure where to start. First of all, Mr. How, I just want to address my comment to you. You understand that I'm not cutting your budget and I'm not trying to tell you how to fight crime. I'm not defunding any, I, you, you've been given more money in your budget. It's a $4.7 million budget. You've had increased positions. We've given you everything you've asked for. And what we're doing is we're asking to hold $50,000 for further clarification. The clarification that I need, this is not about values. This is not about life saving. This is not about how you fight crime. That's not my job at all. What this is for me is it's a resource. It's a valuable resource, as you've said, but I don't understand the funding mechanism. You, you've told me, I saw it as a by-county venture. You've said you don't think it is. It's regional. I need to understand more clearly what that regionalness is. Is it us, Allentown, Bucks, Monroe? I, I need to know more. I need to understand the funding more. The state, the feds, everybody participates in this. We're participating in this. We're named on grants for this. The other day you made a comment that if we don't do this now, it's going away. Well, and you, then you said, well, no, it's not exactly going away. I want to support your efforts. I want to support this money, but I'd like to keep it where it is and I'd like to get further clarification. If we just hand the money over tonight, then we don't need the clarification. They were just giving you the money and we're giving you what you need. Uh, I just want to know what the interplay of the funding of the state, the feds, they have a $1.6 budget. Are we contributing to that? And what are we contributing to that? And when we, what are we getting from that? That's what I'm asking for. I'm not trying to be fat girl. I'm not, I'm just trying to do my due diligence as a councilwoman and asking questions. And I think the lack of transparency on that opens the door to some questions from taxpayers. I heard Mr. Lot said, I agree. I don't need to know the mechanisms of how they solve crimes. What do we gain as a county? Why is our county giving money to another county? And how does it all affect the dollars and cents? That's why I brought this to the fore. No other reason. The drug forfeiture is interesting, but again, that's not my budget. So I, I just wanted to make that clear, that no one is defunding anything. We have given you an increase in your budget. We're just asking to put 50 aside for further clarification. And I thank everybody for their time.
Okay, I'm going to give Mr. How an opportunity to respond before I go to another council member.
I don't know. Well, who, who said anything about defunding? I mean, where did, where did the funding come from? I, I don't know where you, where this, this came up. But I asked for a hundred thousand dollars and that was cut in your amendment. And you can phrase it any way you want, but that's exactly what was done. And I never said it was going away, never once said it was going away because I don't control the Rick. I, I told you at all times that I don't know what their response will be when I tell them that I'm not, I didn't get the money that, um, I asked for. So I, I would appreciate, I don't mind, you know, this is not personal for me and I, and I don't mind, uh, you know, the questions. In fact, I value them, but I don't like information being placed in my mouth that isn't accurate. And, and I never said anything about defunding and I never said anything about, about, uh, this thing going away. And I, and I don't, and I don't like the idea that people are, are saying that it was. The simple fact is this is worth a hundred thousand dollars. It's worth more than that. We've been underpaying for years and we're paying to a service they give us. We're not involved in hiring or firing or doing anything with, with, with the Rick. We are involved in, in their, uh, operation and this is the price that I believe it costs. Again, this was my judgment, okay? It wasn't something they imposed on me. This is my budget, okay? This isn't John Morganelli's budget. It isn't the next guy's after me budget. It's my budget. And that's what I thought this budget was worth as the district attorney, as a person that's been doing it since 1986.
So I apologize if I misspoke. I thought I understood you to say that it was going away the other day.
No.
Asked you about that. You said, well, no, it's not. So that's the point that I was referencing was our conversation from the other day.
I never said it was going away. I don't, I can't, I can't make it go, okay? I can't make it go away. I can only say whether or not I'll, I'll be accepted in there with a reduced payment.
Okay, and, and thank you. Now, I'm going to go to Mr. Myers. He had his hand up. Mr. Myers?
This whole conversation seems to be hinged on one thing. And that seems to be direct communication on what exactly we're getting out of the Rick. So I think at this time, uh, we need to make an effort to get whoever is in charge to come make a presentation and maybe we can settle this for once and for all and do it in early January if possible.
Okay.
In my meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Okay, uh, anybody else on council? Ms. Zarinski?
Yeah, I just had a question to clarify something that, uh, Mr. How said. Uh, you said that this is, this is your budget and that this is the amount that you thought this was worth. Is this an amount that you negotiated that's arbitrary or is this the cost for the Rick?
No, this is, this is the amount that, there was no negotiation. Um, this is, this, this was not a, an amount that they asked for. This is an amount that I believe, uh, was worthy of this from the, uh, use that law enforcement gets out of it. And not to mention the fact that I, I think we've been underpaying for years.
So this is what you valued the Rick at? That North Hampton County should pay for the Rick? This is what we should pay?
Based on my experience, based on, on what I've been doing for the last 36 years, yes.
So, okay, so why isn't there in a designated amount that the Rick costs? Such that these, uh, costs are equitably distributed between the people participating? Like, why, why is it an arbitrary amount that you get to set? That isn't necessarily set by, um, the people who control the Rick in Lehigh County? Like, there's a certain cost to it, right?
Right.
So it costs a certain amount every year. If I, if I say, you know what? I only want to pay $50,000 for the Rick. That's how much I value it at. But another county says, I value that at a hundred thousand dollars. Is that acceptable?
Well, it depends on their level of involvement. Uh, and I, and that would be up to Lehigh County. Um, I know a hundred thousand is acceptable to them. Um, because I, I told them that, 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 uh, I was going to ask for that amount. Um, they never requested it. Um, and this was the, this was the amount that I thought was, was worthy. And I, I, I'm not quite sure what you mean by other agencies. If you're referring to police and stuff, that's, that's between them and the Rick because they do, they, their, their job is different than ours and their reason for wanting the Rick is different than ours.
I guess my point is, is if you had said, you know, I think the Rick is valued at $50,000 and that's how much I want to give, and they said, okay, that sounds great. Would that be what we're voting on today?
Yes. If I, if you ask me, if, if, frankly, the value of the Rick is, is, in my humble opinion, is, is much greater than the hundred thousand that we're asking. And I, and I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear last time because what I was trying to say was that if I didn't have the Rick, the price of piecemealing this would be way more expensive. I used the example, uh, the other day that just garnering police reports on a monthly basis, which we've already attempted to do is going to cost $10,000 a month, which of course is 120 grand right there a year. Um, so this to me is, is an extraordinary cost-cutting benefit for, for, for this office and for the county.
But at the same-
All right.
But at the same time, if you went back to Lehigh County and said, you know what? They only said $50,000. That's all I got. Would that be okay with them?
No, I don't know. And, and Ms. Ms. Vargo Hefner asked me that last week and I think that's where the misunderstanding came. I think she, she thought I implied that it would go away. I cannot tell you what their answer will be. Their answer could be, well, okay, but we don't like it. Or it could be, it's not cost-effective for us to allow you to get this much business from us and not, uh, and, and only get $50,000. I believe a hundred-
But if they do that, will you have to spend money elsewhere to make up for not being in the Rick?
Yes, absolutely. If I'm not in the Rick, we're going to have to spend money elsewhere. Yes, indeed.
And will it be more than the $50,000 that, uh, is proposed being reallocated into the contingency fund or earmarked into the contingency fund?
Yeah, as I said, it would, just to, just to begin the process of what the Rick does, uh, I mean, just a small percentage of what the Rick does will cost us 120 grand right off the bat. Uh, and then, and then from there it would only go up because it, we're not even talking about the expertise we get in our own trials, which would cost a ton of money. So, uh, yeah, I mean, it would, it would be exponentially more expensive. Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Zarinski, I'm going to hold on and I see Peg, I, I, there's a few people that want to talk. Let me just, uh, say, I mean, I think we have to remember what, what we're at here as, I mean, what the Rick costs, we can get into all that. The, the elected district attorney of our county is saying that in his judgment, $100,000 is necessary for him to do this with the Rick. And we can get down the road as to why. We get requests all the time from departments left and right. Uh, just like, uh, the, the, uh, the, the coroner could say, I need, I'm the coroner. I need this. Uh, he's the DA. He's independently elected. He says, I need this. So I don't know. I don't know. I, I, and I, that's why I'm saying, so if we cut to the chase, he's saying, I, I, he's saying, I believe that I got to give a hundred thousand dollars to get this and that's, I'm doing the best that I can. Whether, whether you agree with that or not, that's every council person's discretion. So what I'm going to do is Kevin, I know you wanted to talk, but this is Ferraro. We have the pleasure of her, her presence tonight, uh, and she's feeling better. So I am going to recognize Ms. Peg Ferraro.
Okay, I just truly feel that we should not procrastinate. I think this hundred thousand dollars should be given to our district attorney who's been in this job forever. And, um, I mean, as an assistant and so forth, and now as the DA. It's certainly a worthy project. We more than get our money's worth out of it. We've had the budget since October. Why didn't we ask for information and get more information on funding and so forth before the last minute? So I just feel we should move ahead and, and give, uh, and fulfill what was asked for and have certainly had come in in January and bring in the people and you can get more information. But in the meantime, we're getting more out of this than we're putting into it already.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, now, are you finished, Peg?
I am. Thank you.
I just, I don't want to cut you off. I get in trouble for that. So, uh, I, I think the next one was Kevin Lot because I didn't see any other hands up. So, Mr. Lot, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is moving pretty quick and, and, and kind of on the same line as Peg was just saying. Mr. How, I, I just want to make sure I understood. And it was like a couple of times right before Tara, you said, hey, I'll bring them in, in a week. So are you, are you good? Are you comfortable with putting that 50,000 in a contingency fund? Bring, bringing these people and explaining to us what we need to, you know, our information? I mean, are you, you know, I thought I heard you kind of say you were good with that. I just want to clarify that for myself.
Yeah. Good, thank you. No, I'm not. I want the, I want the hundred thousand and then I'll have whoever, whoever you want come and explain it to you. I believe I made my position clear. I believe I, 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 I've, you know, I've, I've let you know that I think this is necessary and I do think it's necessary. I think it's more than necessary. I think it's critical, but I am willing to bring anybody in to explain it, uh, to, to, so that you have comfort in knowing that your hundred thousand dollars was well spent.
Thank you.
All right. Are there, um, oh, wait, Bill McGee, it's like a little dark. I said, Bill McGee, go ahead.
Am I dark? Should I?
No, no. The light's lighting.
Nice and bright.
Don't, 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 don't take that to mean anything than his screen was. All right, go ahead, Mr. McGee.
Quickly, uh, I think some of the questions that people are going to need to know, at least me, is from the district attorney, from the folks at Rick. What's, what's next year? What's the year after? What's, where's the funding coming from? Because when I first started on council, there was a big discussion about the Rick. There was, there was a half a million dollars. There was a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of, you know, it's a great thing. I think it's a great thing. I think it's good that it's regional. I think, I, I said that last night. I don't know if anybody picked up on it or not, but I'm saying it again today. Uh, as far as the questions, I, I think it's more about, you know, what's next year? What's the year after? Has there been thought, like, so a question for the district attorney real quick? Do you have any idea? Is that, is, is that what you're looking at for next year? I mean, you've probably looked at next year a little bit, right?
Yeah, yes, I have. And, and this, for, for, as far as I'm concerned, there's no intention for me to move from this number.
Well, I, I just know that I think that's going to be some of the questions when, when everybody- and, and some of the things beyond your control, you know, what, where are they, where are they at? What, is Lehigh County going to reduce their funding? Or are the feds going to step up? Is, you know, quote, anyway, plenty of questions coming and, uh, um, so I guess, um, after a meeting, I guess my only other question is if we do, if we do go with the 50,000 in abeyance, how soon will it be released to the DA if that's the direction we go?
That I can't answer. I, um, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know. Uh, Mr., I think one thing though was clear and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. How. Whether you get the money tonight, all of it or 50,000, you're still going to ask the Rick to come to council?
Yes, yes, I will. I mean, I, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, they'll come. I just-
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferraro.
I, I just want to clarify for my fellow council members who feel that we should be using the drug money. I understand that that's not an appropriate use of the drug forfeiture money. And I have my dog here, because she's getting crazy with all these people talking.
You're correct. You are correct.
What's your dog's name?
Is that correct? This is Ruby.
Ruby.
It is. It is.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Hawke.
It is correct, Councilwoman Ferraro. Thank you for bringing that up.
So those, so those who are opposed to giving you this money, saying you should use some of your own drug money, that negates that reason.
Yes.
All right. Now, before we vote on this, is there anyone else who wants to weigh in? I don't see any hands up, or I don't notice anything. Does anyone want to, Mr. Kusick?
Just briefly. I, I would respectfully disagree. I, I think that at least a portion would qualify. However, the fifty thousand dollars, to, to me, is irrelevant. What, what I, what would like to see from this district attorney is transparency regarding the, the allocation of drug forfeiture money. So that's, that's just my point, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else from anyone?
To be clear on what exactly we are, I'd like to be clear on what exactly we are voting for.
I'm going to read it. As soon as everyone's pretty much, unless they have anything pressing, I'm, I'm going to get into that right now. Okay? All right. So here's what we're doing. And Linda, listen to me and then say yea or nay on what's happening here. What we're voting on is the amended resolution. And it would say that we're taking fifty thousand dollars. We're reducing the allocation of the district attorney's operating account by fifty thousand dollars as a reduction of the allocation for the RIC. And that fifty thousand would be put into the Northampton County Council Contingency Fund. Correct?
I believe we already voted on that when Lori made her motion.
Yeah. All right, it's part of it. I was just
We're voting on the, we're voting on the amendment as amendment, as amended.
Yes, and I'm reading the entire thing as amended. It's, it's, I'm, I'm just stating the obvious, because sometimes the obvious isn't apparent. That what we're voting on is the original amendment. And stating that, in fact, the fifty thousand dollars, it's now an amended motion, which says the fifty thousand dollars will end up in the contingency. A vote yes is to support taking that fifty thousand dollars out of his budget. A vote no is not supporting taking that fifty thousand dollars out of his operating budget. So are there any questions before we call for the vote?
Oh, hold, wait one second. I'm looking for Lori's original.
I have it.
Okay, Lori's original motion
All right.
Was to take fifty thousand dollars and place it from the DA's budget and place it into contingency fund until they got a review from the RIC. So that is the motion that we already adopted.
We adopted it.
That was the original motion. You seconded it. Council voted on it. It was a vote of eight to one to pass.
To, to specify the fact that it would go into the contingency account if we voted on taking it out to begin with.
It's already, we voted on Tuesday to take it out of his budget. His budget now is fifty thousand dollars less, according to the sheet.
That's correct.
Okay. So now, you're saying we're going to take fifty thousand dollars and put it into the contingency fund for the RIC until we get a presentation from the RIC.
So
I voted against that.
I don't Right. That was the original motion. It was voted on, it passed by a vote of eight to one. Now, his budget is still fifty thousand dollars less, according to the sheet.
Well
Well, then I make a motion to
Yeah.
Yes, so then a motion can be made. A motion can be made at this time to leave it at the fifty thousand or to increase it to the hundred thousand that he originally asked for.
All right. All right, I hear you. Now, let me just say this. Yeah, that was then an error in how that was put together in the sense that the amendment, that we, we said that, that we were making, and we were amending the original motion, but not necessarily, and, and we voted eight to one to amend it. But we didn't then hold a subsequent vote on the motion as amended. And I thought that was very clear.
I don't understand about amending the motion.
Mr. Spadoni, could you please weigh in on this?
You know what? We're going to vote on the, we're going to vote on a motion right now. Do, the motion is, do you want to give the district attorney one hundred thousand, put the one hundred thousand dollars into his operating account?
No, 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 that's not
Stop, 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 stop.
That's not the motion. I, you know, excuse me. The motion is to vote on the budget amendment, as it stands. We voted the other day. The amendment is here.
The other day doesn't count.
Passes or it doesn't? If it doesn't pass, he gets his hundred thousand dollars back. I need Mr. Spadoni to weigh in on this, please. Because
No, that's not
Haven't been moved.
All right, timeout.
The water's completely here.
That's what Excuse me, that is what Ms. Zumbo has said, that, exactly the opposite of what you're saying. And that's why I'm trying to get control of this thing.
Can I, can I speak, please?
Yes.
Okay. On Tuesday, you voted to decrease his budget by fifty thousand.
Yes.
That was done. It's on the sheet that it's now decreased by fifty thousand. Today, Lori made the motion to take fifty thousand and put it into contingency for the RIC upon their presentation. That was voted on by a vote of eight to one. Right now, fifty thousand dollars is going to go into the budget to be put into contingency for the RIC. However, DA Hawk's budget right now is fifty thousand dollars less. So you can either leave it the way it is and leave it at fifty thousand, like it is now, or take a vote to either increase it or take out the whole fifty, you know, the other fifty.
All right. I, I, I don't want to get involved in this over the thing. We can do it easily, Lori. We'll, we'll get it straight. I, I, I know when Chris and I were talking, I think Chris understood. We amend budget, we, the, the vote on Tuesday is irrelevant. It just moved this forward. It, it says, like, you could have nine people moving something forward in the day of the vote, you could have nine people voting against it. And that's the
So you need to vote it up or down? And if you vote it no, then it goes away, correct?
You mean
It stands as it was.
Today.
We're complicating it.
I'm not, we're not, you know what? What's complicated, it is not understanding how you amend, you make an amendment. But here's what we're going to do. We'll vote on it the way it was just described, so it's clear to everybody. A vote of yes means that you are supporting the amendment of, of what, Linda? Putting fifty thousand in, in contingency?
Or yes.
Or a vote of no.
Is what?
That already passed.
Already passed. All right, so here's the motion. I make a motion that we put fifty thousand dollars back into the, back into the district attorney's operating expense.
Okay, that, that, that we can do.
That makes sense.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Come on, come on, calm down, folks. You've been doing great. All right, I made a motion. Was there a second?
I seconded it.
I'll say a second. Okay, so now, everybody, Linda, read the motion and, and tell people what they're doing.
Okay, we're making a motion to put fifty thousand dollars back into the district attorney's budget. So it will be at a hundred thousand. And Carrie seconded the motion.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. So there you go. So that's the resolution, that's the motion. And yes, yes, hold it, timeout, timeout. Calm down. You're, you're going to have a blood aneurysm. All right, the thing is, so now open it up for discussion. Ms. Vargo Hefner, you're recognized.
My understanding, and I really need Mr. Spadoni to weigh in on this, is that if you voted on my motion and my amendment as it stood, if you voted yes, it stands as it is and the money comes into contingency. If you vote no, it goes off the table and he gets his original hundred thousand dollars. I don't know why we're complicating it with a second motion. It's either a pass fail of what we did the other day. It stays or it goes, because everything else we just passed. So if you don't pass it as it's written, it goes away. Am I correct, Mr. Spadoni?
Let me, let me be clear. Counsel, in this process, by proper motion, second, and vote, can do anything they want to do with the current budget. They could say, and I don't mean to be glib, they could take that one hundred thousand and give it to me. Counsel has the authority to act on a budgetary basis. They are not bound by anything until the budget is passed.
Thank you.
You could have a motion, a second, and a vote at a prior meeting. And at, there could be a change of heart. There could be a change of circumstances. There could be a change of revenue or disbursement. And counsel can appropriately pass a motion, deleting it, amending it, enlarging it, whatever counsel would like to do.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is that I believe that there's something that's written that's on the table, that there was amendment made for. And if you vote for this and put the money back, then what happens to the fifty dollars that we just amended? And it just goes in our contingency? We're not doing that.
No, you're not. You changed
On a clean, a vote yes, a vote no. At, at this point, it's been beat to death.
I, I, I have a suggestion. We can amend Mr. Heckman's motion to say that we were going to put a hundred thousand dollars into the DA's budget and take out the fifty thousand that you're going to give to the contingency.
Thank you. That makes
So you're going to withdraw the fifty thousand from the contingency amendment and put it into the DA's
Back into the DA's
Attorney for a hundred thousand.
Fine.
Okay.
Is everybody
Thank you.
Is everybody okay? Now, discussion. Any further discussion? A vote yes means you're, you're, you're putting it back into his operating. A vote no means you're leaving it in contingency. And if there's no other discussion, Linda, let's call for the vote on this.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, wait, yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
No.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Pass.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lott.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
He's muted.
Me, Bill, you're muted, you're muted.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of seven to one, I mean, eight to one with one pass.
The money is restored.
No, it's seven. Yes, seven votes, yes.
John, so you could come back, you could vote.
Oh, John, you wanted to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes by a vote of eight to one.
Okay. So we're all clear. What vote just happened was a hundred thousand dollars was put back into his operating budget, taking the fifty original and the fifty from contingency, from the original motion. Is that correct, Linda?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. If, if that's
If you repeat that, please.
Go ahead, Linda, repeat it.
You want to know what it is? Peg, so
The hundred thousand and the fifty to contingency is null and void. It's not going there.
Correct.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right. Fair enough. If everybody's on the same page now, we will move on to the other budget amendments. And that would be Public Works. And this took a lot of time, and it was good, though. We had a good discussion, and it's, it's a big deal. And so, you know, it, it's, things like this take time. That's part of our job. I'm glad at the end, we, we understood what was going on. And I apologize if anything I did that was confusing. All right. It wasn't my intent. Public Works, we have the Public Works Administration operating an increase of nine thousand for the Lower Park rental lot. And the Parks and Recreation operating an increase of thirty six thousand eight hundred for the fries run embankment delayed until 2021. Any, anything on that? And Linda, I want you to read off exactly what we're voting on on this.
Okay, so now there's, so everything's going to pass. But from, on the, on the budget revisions sheet
Yes.
With the district attorney, it's going to go back to its original hundred thousand. So it's going to go back from, they're going to, technically, what they're going to do is they're going to increase it fifty thousand, so the fifty thousand goes back in. So then it will be it will be like five thousand, no, it'll be six thousand three hundred, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. His budget will go back to.
All right. Fair enough. All right. So now we're calling on, are we calling on the vote for the revised sheet, correct?
We're calling on a vote to adopt the resolution to adopt the amendments.
Fair enough. Okay. Does someone have to introduce it, or was it introduced?
Lori already did.
Fair enough. I seconded it. All right, discussion on everything. If there is none, let's call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lott.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky. Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now, we're voting on the, what's next, Linda?
Voting on the budget as amended.
Thank you. That's right. Adoption of the 2021 Northampton County Budget as Amendment. Would someone introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom.
It, it's not a motion, it's an introduction.
I'm sorry, introduction. Apologize, apologize again.
So it was Carrie that's doing the introduction?
Where is it? Which one is it?
It's the one where it says that we're adopting the general fund, the special revenue funds, and the capital projects funds.
I got to find my paper, I got to go through these papers. What, what number is that?
It was after the budget amendment sheet.
Is that the one where it says, by Northampton County Council, that proposed two thousand twenty-one hundred, two thousand twenty-one Northampton County Budget shall be amended as indicated?
Shall be adopted as amended. Yes.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Right.
And that's a resolu, and that you have
That's a resolution.
That's a resolution. All right, so we vote on the resolution.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Lott.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yay.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, now we go to the adoption of the 2021 County Capital Improvements Plan. Would someone please introduce this? Uh, somebody, how do you want to introduce? Oh, Ms. Zirinsky will introduce this. Is it, uh, discussion? Mr. Kuzic.
Yeah, uh, real quick. First of all, I want to thank the administration for clearing up the issues regarding the, the prison. I think that was, uh, very helpful. Uh, but, you know, unfortunately for me, uh, I, I strongly feel that, that the county has the ability to repair a bridge in my district. Um, and I would rather see us take it upon ourselves to do it because I don't see this getting done a- anytime soon. In fact, I believe that a, a child born today may not be able to cross that bridge when they go to kindergarten. So, um, I'll, I'll be opposing, um,
That's true.
Capitol Improvements Plan. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the Capitol's improvements plan? I don't see any very well. Let's call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
No.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot. Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. Now, we're going to have the, uh, adoption of the 2021 Real Estate Tax Millage Rate. And that, that was Mr. McGee and Ms. Fargo Hefner had introduced the ordinance at the November nineteenth, uh, 2020 meeting, excuse me. Are there any, is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments? Not hearing anybody, not seeing anybody, we'll end that and we'll go to discussion by council. Any discussion? If there is none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Well, counsel, you can pat yourselves on the back. Just pass the budget. With no time, please. Now, the other thing I want to bring up under old business is, um, I didn't get it out to everybody, but I, I, and I know I could just do this, but, but I, I want a resolution so that we all are aware and, and we vote on it. In the spirit of transparency. I, I do want to upgrade the, uh, the deputy clerk to counsel pay grade from CE one three C to CE one four D, uh, in the office of Northampton County Council. And that has a great deal to do with technology and, and the increasing, uh, responsibilities that are going to be coming, uh, next, uh, next year. I could introduce it tonight. I have, I don't know if you all, you, you don't have any of this information, the sheet. The total amount of change would come from, would be two thousand, total with salary is two thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars uh, over the course of the year. Uh, and it would come out of council's budget. So, um, if, if there's a preference to wait until next meeting, I certainly understand for a better discussion. Is there, yeah, Ms. Fargo Hefner, go ahead.
Uh, I would really advocate that we do this and that we do this tonight. I think, um, that she's done an admirable job and that she deserves this, uh, just putting up with us and our lack of technological skills. She probably deserves double that amount, but I think we're being reasonable and fair. So I would hope that people would, would recognize her efforts in the, uh, ridiculous year. This is her first year on the job and she had to deal with COVID and all of us, and so I fully support this.
I resemble that remark. Uh, Mr. Myers?
I, I, I'm echoing what Lori had to say along with the fact that, you know, she's been instrumental in keeping all of us hurrying the whole staff, doing, uh, keeping us on point with all the craziness we got going on. So she definitely wants it.
All right, uh, well then, it's been introduced. Uh, let's have discussion. Uh, anybody else have any discussion? Uh, Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I'd just like to, uh, point out that I've noticed, uh, what a great job she's doing, uh, for us. You know, said, but I, I just wanted to say it. I think, I think it's very important to say when somebody's doing a good job that they get recognized and, and I'm, I'm very happy to support this. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, let me just add, since I, I, I put it together, I've had discussions with, uh, with Ms., uh, Ms. Zembo about this. So this is just out of the blue and, and, uh, discussions regarding Ms. Shafnisky and what she does and what we're expecting her to do. Um, and, uh, I, I just came to this decision over the course of this past year. Uh, because you, you've already said it. I mean, this is an extremely weird year. I think anybody by any measure, we could say that. And who knows with next year? I mean, we're just, it's not going to change overnight. We all know that. So, um, all right, is there any further discussion? I think then we're going to call for a vote tonight. All right, go ahead. Call for a vote tonight then, uh, Ms. Zembo.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lot. Kevin?
I think he's muted.
Kevin, can you hear us?
I'm breaking.
He's frozen.
You're breaking up, but yes, absolutely, yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes, you're breaking up, though.
Mr. Myers.
Absolutely.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Yeah, you know, I'm looking at, at Kevin and it's just a frozen head, but, but. All right, um, thank you, everyone. I think that was good. Now, is there any other old business to discuss?
There's two other items on here. Do you see them?
Old business?
Oh.
Is there, is there under old?
No, I can't see. I'm sorry. I'm down in the weeds here.
You know, I can.
I was wondering what we were missing.
I can confuse myself without any help, so.
Clearly.
All right. New business, number one. Introduction of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania, to lease approximately two thousand six hundred and fifty rentable square feet of space at seventeen hundred Northampton Street, Eastern, Pennsylvania, from Helen Garofalo and Helen Beth G. Bilchik. Would someone sponsor this?
I will.
I, Linda, did you get that?
Who's the second? I got Lori. Who's the second?
I did, Linda.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, the public hearing debate and possible vote will be held at the December tenth, 2020 meeting. Thank you.
Oh, that's next week.
Yes.
I gotta get it. Oh, turn it.
Uh, consider.
Turn it off.
I think Kevin's yelling at somebody, but I'm not sure. I hope it's not me. Uh, anyway. It's a donation from Post Six Eleven American Legion and Pennsylvania Chapter of State Guard Association of the United States Resolution. Would someone introduce this?
I, who, no, 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 never mind. I gotta find it.
Linda, do you got it?
Mr. Mars is going to introduce it, right?
I gotta find it.
All right, fine. Discussion.
What is this?
I don't know.
It's a donation.
It's a donation.
He just reads the now therefore, correct?
Yeah, go ahead and read it, Lori.
It's, it's the, it's the second from the last item.
Now therefore be it hereby resolved that Northampton County Council authorizes the county executive to accept a donation of a wall monument to recognize those who served in the global war on terrorism. Estimated value one hundred dollars from Post Six Eleven American Legion and the Pennsylvania Chapter of State Guard Association of the United States as a token of their appreciation for many years of service from the Veterans Affairs Office that has been very instrumental in helping veteran and veterans affairs support.
Thank you. Very good. All right, discussion? If none, let's call for a vote.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Lot. Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Muted.
I think he's frozen. He's muted.
Muted.
I see him now.
You're good now, Kev?
Yeah, I keep losing you. I hope I got the vote for the raise for at least.
Yes, you did. Now we're voting on the.
Now you're voting on the veterans' gift.
Veterans gift.
Vote again, Kevin.
Yes.
All right, that's fine.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of the 2021 Northampton County Council Meeting Schedule Resolution. Would someone introduce the resolution? I will. Okay, uh, we'll have discussion. And just so you know, we've always do this. We put it out. This is our meetings. Having said that, like anything else, as you heard tonight, something may happen or come up and there may have to be a sea change with a meeting here or there or something, but this is roughly going forward, how we're set up for our meetings next year. Discussion? If there is none, let's call for a vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes, yes.
By a vote of nine to zero.
What, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin, what?
All right, all right, all right.
I'm losing my internet.
It's okay. We still see you. Ask if there is any other new business to discuss. I'm asking. Uh, Mr. Kuzic?
Yeah, Mr. President, a, a point of inquiry regarding, uh, new business item number one. Uh, you had indicated, uh, that the potential vote is, uh, scheduled for next week. I guess my question is, uh, whether or not that is an adequate amount of time uh, in order to do that, because typically, uh, we've been unable, uh, to do it within a one week period. And, uh, if that is not possible, uh, is there, uh, an issue of timeliness in regard to, uh, the approval of this lease?
Very good. Uh, well, here's what I'll do. We can have one. I will ask the administration if there's a timeliness issue and two, Mr., uh, uh, Spadoni then can look and check the charter uh, and see if there's any reason in the world why we wouldn't be able to do this next week. And if we can't do it next week, and we can't. So is anybody in the administration want to address this on a timeliness matter?
Go on home.
No, no, he's still there.
There he is.
It needs to be, uh, completed by the end of the year.
All right. Um, I'm not aware, John, of, of a timeframe that would, would stop this from being voted on in a week. I mean, if, if I may, could you give me thirty seconds to check? I'm at my office. You know what? Go ahead. Let me check the charter. In the meantime, how's Ruby? Hey, Ruby? Good girl, Ruby?
Oh, my goodness gracious.
What a good girl. Ruby's a good girl.
Yeah, that's what we need on this.
Brand.
Okay, look, uh, I'm going to jump to this while that's being checked. Thank you, Mr. McClure. He's checked. Uh, um, is there any other new business? Seeing none? Counsel Committee reports. Does anybody want to do, Mr. Mars?
Kevin?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Kevin Lot.
Me? Can you hear me? Good. I, I had, I attended a DCED, uh, meeting. We reviewed the last set, the fourth set of small business grants from the CARES Act, uh, that will be presented to council at their next meeting. If we approve the fourth round of the CARES Act, we will have, we will have given out ten million seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents will be given back to businesses in Northampton County through the CARES Act.
That's amazing.
That's, that's amazing.
And that's amazing.
Kevin, just so you know, I, I lost your picture. There you are. Um, just so you know, I talked to Linda. Uh, now we have a, a meeting where they're going to discuss this next Thursday, I believe.
Yeah.
Three thirty.
Is that, Kevin, can you hear me?
Yeah, I, you're breaking up real bad. I got a bad connection all sudden.
All right.
But yes, next Thursday, next Thursday, I believe we're going to bring the care, the last round of CARES to you.
Okay, and, and I just want everybody to know, I, I talked to Linda. Um, what I ask her to do is send a memo to Tina Smith and ask for, our printers, we can't get it out the way they can. To the, a readable, long paper copy of all the grants for the meeting next Thursday, so everybody can be able to read them and see them. I mean, I got something, but it breaks up into little sheets and it's impossible. It's like putting together a Rubik's Cube. So we're making a request to DCED. They have the kind of printer that can do it to give us one of those long sheets that we can then see it all and we know what we're voting on. I just wanted to point that out. That memo will go out, either did already or will go out tomorrow. All right, very good. Any other committee reports? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a liaison, sorry.
But I'm going to echo to Chris. Chris is back. I, I see him in front of one of his many music.
I am relying on section six oh two of the Home Rule Charter and it indicates that it needs to be posted electronically after introduction and the public hearing cannot be held less than seven days. So we're right at the cusp. If today is December third and we have the meeting December tenth and it's posted electronically, we're right on the first day we could do it.
So if she's posting it electronically before midnight, we're cool.
Right, I would post it tonight.
That's what I'm saying. Are there any?
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I, um, talked to the Express Times. It will be published on Monday and, um, it's going to go up on the web, um, as soon as we get finished. So.
That's published.
All right, but it's electronically.
Yep.
On their web electronically as soon as you send it over.
Well, if, if, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, we're talking about publication now in print media. The seven days would run from that timeframe. Yeah, but she's posted it on the web.
But she said she's posting it this evening.
She's electronically, she's posting it. They told her it won't show up in the paper until when, Linda?
It'll be in the paper Monday.
Right, so if you go by the date it's in the paper, it is not seven days. If you, if it's on their website, it is seven days. So what do you, what's?
I'm relying specifically upon six oh two subsection D. Within seven days, it is to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the county. And then in subsection E, it says you'll not hold the public hearing less than seven days after the date of the publication required in that section. So if it would be published on Monday, it would be seven days from that date.
And, and I mean, fairness, let me just add, uh, or maybe in my own mind, uh, our charter doesn't mention anything about, uh, electronic meetings, uh, virtual meetings. So, I mean.
I understand that, but the charter doesn't control meetings. That's the Pennsylvania sunshine law.
Yeah, but I guess my question is if in fact, it does, it does, in today's world, does a newspaper's website translate in the same fashion as a paper, printed paper? As you would read the law. You're the solicitor. You tell me.
If it is published in the newspaper's website, I would then say it is then published in the newspaper.
All right.
I would not limit it to the print edition.
Right, now, if we do this, the, the, the possibilities are someone, somebody could want to take this to court and spend some money, say, I got, say, you can't do this, uh, you did wrong by us, and I don't even know what the hell the remedy would be. But I'm going to.
It's posted this evening. I'm very comfortable with it.
I understand. Thank you. Mr. Um, Executive had something he wanted to add. Go ahead.
I think y- y- your point about the potential lawsuit, you know, you, you have to have standing to bring a lawsuit. Um, and the fact of the matter is, the potential aggrieved party or adverse party would be the landlord. The landlord wants the lease, so, um, I don't, I don't think we're going to have a legal problem. I agree with Mr. Spadoni.
I'm going to roll the legal dice that I know as little about as the Rick and I will say that I'm fine with it being done tonight. John, do you want to change your vote and abstain because of a possible lawsuit?
Uh, there, there's no vote at this time, so, uh, we'll wait.
You're right. No, I'm, I understand. I'm just kidding around. I mean, the point I, and I shouldn't. I'm getting punch drunk and we're going to end this soon. But the thing is, uh, I, I don't know. I mean, that's where I'm at with it. I think it should go forward. And next week I say everybody should consider their vote based on the concern that Mr. Kuzic raised. Uh, certainly it's a legitimate concern. The charter.
I want to give you cover, but I, I will opine that if it is posted this evening, we are in good stead with the seven day timeframe set forth in section six oh two.
Let's hope they post it before midnight and then.
Can I, can I just? Can I, can I just say something though?
Well, you certainly-
Are we talking about publication on the, the paper's website? Because I was, I was talking about it being posted on our website tonight. So that may cause an issue.
Yeah. All right.
So Christopher, what's, what's the call on that?
The call on that is, is that if you read it literally, which I am bound to do, it says that it is with the newspaper, not less than seven days. Now, if it was posted on their website within not less than seven days, I'd be very comfortable. But if you can't get it on their website tonight, uh, we, I have some concern.
All right. Here's what I'm going to do. Let's, uh, let's, let's see what happens. Uh, uh, we can have a, a, uh, I'll call tomorrow, I'm going to talk to Christopher and I'm going to talk to Linda. And if necessary, we will have to hold a, we, a whole day virtual meeting if it's absolutely necessary to cover ourselves legally, uh, so that we're clear on, on the timeframe. And we, we can do that as counsel as long as it's publicized. And, uh, that could be the only thing on the agenda. Chris, is that correct?
That's true. And I think one of the concerns maybe is, is that not to speak for the administration, obviously, but certainly with the, the discussion with the landlord, they may certainly agree that that's a situation that needs to be tended to.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, to me, I agree. I don't think, I think, I don't think there's going to be any legal things that fly at us. But you heard the solicitor's opinion. I'm going to call him tomorrow. I'll talk to Linda. This, uh, the administration can present something. We certainly have the power. That's why we do everything the first two weeks in December because it gives us some leeway. If, if push comes to shove and it's absolutely necessary, fine, we can, the administration, I think, is clear that nobody's opposing this. This is all legal mumbo jumbo. Correct, uh, Mr. Uh, Mc, uh, McClure? You get that?
I, I do and I agree.
All right. We'll see what we can do.
We'll be, we'll, we'll be okay.
Fine. All right. I think we'll get this resolved before the end of the year. One way or another. So are there any other committee reports? Mr. Myers?
Yeah, we had a meeting tonight for capital projects and, uh, we got clarification on what they're doing at the jail. And, uh, what they'll be doing sounds like a great idea because we'll be putting low-risk people in that area when they're done. And it's because of work that was done in the seventies that we have to do that. Plus it will be insulated and, and be better taken care of. John, if you want to chime in on any of it, uh, feel free to add anymore if I missed something.
Not at this hour.
I threw my bone.
Amen.
In a, in a, in a bipartisan move of appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Kuzic. All right. Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none? Liaison?
I have two liaison reports. Quickly, GPA met Tuesday morning. Um, five bridges are scheduled for initiation, um, as early as January first of next year, leaving two bridges. Um, and I believe there's some designs. So, uh, he alluded to the fact that, uh, depending on where they go in the design process, they could also possibly be initiated next year also. But right now there are five that are designed and ready to go with various start dates. Um, the, uh, mental health, early intervention, um, developmental disabilities meeting was held on Tuesday also. Uh, they meet quarterly. They are looking for members. So if there's a, a constituent that is interested in serving that population, as long as they are not a provider, they are welcome to apply for membership on that board. Everybody spoke, uh, Brian, uh, who's the head of mental health will be retiring. Um, after the years of service and a three-year extended stay and we wish him well. Um, I thank them all for their hard work this year. They have done unprecedented work in really awful times. And, uh, so they are to be commended. Um, and that's it.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Vargo Hefner. Um, are there any other liaison reports? If not, I just want to say, uh, uh, to everybody, Tom and, and to Linda and, and to Aileen, thank you for, with technology. I, I think given who we are, what we are, I think this, this has gone well the last few nights. And I just want to say to council, it was certainly a long meeting, but keep in mind that what you've done, I, I echo what the executive said. It's a great budget and it's a lot of money. And I think people wouldn't be well-served if you walked in here and said, five minutes, it's in, it's out, boom. And I think then they'd question you. So I don't think any discussions about how money's spent, where it's spent is, is a bad discussion. So as the nuns used to say to me, there are no bad questions, only yours, Mr. Heckman. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
All right.
I think that's a unanimous motion to adjourn and a unanimous second, correct?
Yes.
We'll adjourn. Thank you.